...able to be here this evening. Her son and herself, her husband are busy putting things away and doing parent-child activities at the Northwestern University where he's a freshman. I was originally elected to council in 2001 and I'm running for my next term here and I oppose, so I'm going to yield my time to everyone else. And I would entertain any questions anyone has about Ward Two or City of Solon politics or any other issues.
What is Ward Two?
Ward Two is from, is Ada Drive, Navajo Trail, Rappahoe Court in a hall of SOM Center. Then it's Meadow Estates, Liberty Hill, going southbound on the east side of SOM Center to Oakview Estates.
What's your biggest challenge this year?
My biggest challenge this year is to make sure that we're spending money efficiently, make sure that we have some good projects going on. I think the biggest challenge is now with regarding my particular committees that I'm on is with regarding Public Works and making sure that we have this pilot program for the automated recycling and make sure that that program goes well. The first couple of weeks have gone real well and looks like we're going to be able to save a lot of money doing that program once it goes forward to full swing, but we're just in the second week now. Rick?
Well, Rob, you seem too eager to yield your time, so I'm going to raise a question to you. But it's really, instead of waiting until the end and addressing it to everybody, I invite all the candidates for Ward Council seats to respond. And it's a matter that you and I talked a little bit just before this. The early ballots are coming out. One of the matters will involve a rezoning issue. And I'm concerned about three aspects of how we get to the issue being on the ballot at this point. I question because of the lack of comments from council, city council, about the openness and the transparency. Electors who are paying attention haven't heard where people stand. I think that I'd also, in addition to that, would like to hear whether you believe it's a responsibility of a council person to educate the electors. And I'd also, and the last aspect of it I'd like to understand is why do we seem to treat residents differently when they have zoning matters coming up than we do to an individual who bought a building, didn't get an occupancy permit, and instead of requiring him to petition to get onto the ballot, we vote to put it on the ballot? And people don't know what it is that we're supposed to be voting about. I think the process is terrible. So you're up here first because you're two. Ward Two, not...
Well, he's running on time.
You can get a first one.
All right, next candidate.
You don't want to question?
Hmm?
Yes, he is.
Question off. First of all, Rick, first of all, it's everything, everything's done in the City of Solon is transparent. We have, first of all, the planning department spoke about this issue first. There were a lot of inter-office memos where it started. It went to the Planning Commission several times. There were public hearings in front of the Planning Commission. There were public hearings in front of council. There were at least three or four council meetings where this was discussed. The, everything's been on the internet. You can watch it on the internet. You can watch it on TV. It's been publicized in the newspapers, so to say that we're not transparent is not correct, Rick. But what I, to go to your second point, what I plan on doing is before the election, a lot of other council members do this before each election, is they go through the issue and they send it to a newsletter to everyone in their ward and say, "This is the zoning issue. This is what happens if you vote for it. This is what happens if you vote against it." They're not taking a position on it, but they're saying this is what the issue is. This is what the one side is, this is what the other side is, so the City of Solon, the electorate can make an intelligent decision on that ballot issue. But nothing was done in private, nothing was done. That's not how the City of Solon runs, and you should, you know that, Rick. And nothing was done in private, everything was done in public, and it was all discussed, I can finish. It was all discussed at public meetings.
So I know that.
Stan Gordon, City Council Candidate for Ward Four.
For those that don't know me, I'm Stan Gordon, and I love Solon. I've lived here for about fourteen and a half years. I think that makes a nice banner hanging from our light poles. I was prompted to put that together when I drove through Orland Hills one day and I saw signs that said, "We're the jewel of the community," and I said, "We could do better downhill." So going fast forward downhill, these are the things that I've accomplished while just being a citizen. The third fire station at the corner of SOM and Pettibone, because the cardiac call time when we're being served by the center of town was double the four and a half minutes it took on a cardiac call. That doesn't work well. The last thing I was able to do, I'm sure people went to the post office for years and you slid down the hill with your package and you looked around to see if you were going to get run over, and I worked with Spencer Sue, the postmaster, for five years, and I called the secretary every day, every week. She said, "You again, we have the post office remodeled and opened. I have a caution line on SOM Center. I have the second turn lane on Cruzy Drive. I have the sign put up on 422 by ODOT with one phone call. I have..." Am I hearing?
No. I'm trying to get Bob's attention. There's somebody outside who's stuck.
So I get credit for the...
Yes.
Actually, fast, fast, fast forward. They, there was some talk about moving the center, the firehouse behind Warburg, but this is everything accomplished by just being a citizen. I care about the citizens. I care about Solon. And I'm interested in the present time, we spent thousands of dollars on not buying the property at the corner of SOM and Miles. That's our gateway, and you see a for sale sign. It was for sale originally for about $255,000. If I'm wrong, someone correct me, we could have bought it, but now we spend a fortune of money. You go down the street further, we haven't had a left turn at the corner of Cannon and SOM, which delays traffic flowing through the city because you can't make the left turn nowhere. And then you go further down into the city and you wonder, maybe we ought to rethink some sound barriers to give some people privacy down along 422. And now the city is spending, and I hope someone in the room corrects me, four million plus for traffic signals. Well, listen, ladies and gentlemen, when Joga Lake and Sea World expand and build, we will have more traffic in Solon than we ever had before. What we need to think about is a spur off of 422 into the back of Joga Lake, because if anybody shops at Target or Walmart or Kohl's or any of those stores that are out there waiting for future development, Summit and Joga County have developed those roads to four lanes. They're just waiting, and 306 is going to be developed. So if we think we're going to solve our traffic problem with traffic signals, if you have a five-pound bag of sugar and you pour it out into another container, you still have five pounds of sugar. So with that, those are things, I'll leave you with that, but you can see these things, you might touch them, you'll touch the post office when you go in, but this is what a citizen accomplished. I don't want any award. I just want to make sure that everybody is benefiting from me trying to make it a better place, and I think these things should hang in Solon. I think we deserve it. I think we are a five-star community. I think we can do better than we're doing, but we do have great schools, we have safety departments, we have a service department, we have parks and recreation, and we have beautiful homes and beautiful people. My time's up.
Geez, I almost feel disappointed that I didn't have to pull out the hook. Do we have time for questions?
Yeah, got a couple of your questions. Stan?
Stan, question. Actually, I'd like to ask it of both you and Mark. What, right now, what is the status of the property at 91 and Miles? I know, I know it was, it was, the rezoning was turned down by the voters and then the judge rezoned it. That's part one. And part two, what's, you know what the status is of the airport property behind Church of the Resurrection? You know, that, that was, everybody thought that was going to be a subdivision, and we stopped it on 91, but how, what's going to happen now? How many homes are they going to build?
At the corner there?
No, behind Resurrection.
Behind Resurrection.
I don't have the answer to that number of homes, but I will tell you this, at the corner of SOM and Miles, that's been going back and forth, bumping back and forth, but I'll tell you what bothers me in that corner the most. Across the street of that corner is a wooded barrier and a sidewalk, and we have, we have children that ride their bike and people that walk. If somebody falls behind that dinosaur patch, we will never find them, and that has to be corrected too, if everybody could digitalize that. But that corner of SOM and Miles, Orland Hills bought that abandoned gas station. They graced it, they put fence around there. We can look as good as they can, and I think we ought to do that, but the question is, I think we're up to a hundred and some thousand dollars in legal fees of battling back and forth after we, the people voted. So Jules, the judge, am I correct or incorrect?
Correct.
He said no. Well, what do, what do we count for if we voted on something and this is what we wanted? We should press it further.
Thank you.
Answer again.
I understand you're interested in a new fire truck for the Solon Fire Department. Is that true?
Yes, it is.
And it's about a million dollar cost to the taxpayer, right?
Yes, it is.
Why can't we get fixed as one we have? Or is the ladder, something wrong with the ladder? Or can't we buy it used or buy it since a million dollars?
Well, if I could take a picture out and show you a couple of things and answer your question, would you mind if I did that?
Do you have a picture with you of a fire truck?
I have a picture with me that people might scratch their head in amazement, and a citizen in myself had been going around town for a period of time, and this is a picture here of the Carrington Park Apartments. This is a picture of every back, to get to every Carrington Park apartment, you can't get a fire vehicle in the back of any of them. And if you look further, which is quite upsetting, you don't see a fire hydrant in the back of any of these apartments. So any of these people that dwell on the fourth floor of these buildings, in an incident where the power fails or something and they have to be rescued, we don't have a fire truck to do that. We went down to Stofers and we went down to the clinic building. We checked with the Stofers security because there are people working near the roof, on the top of the roof, and we asked the question of the security guy, Jeff. He says, "Oh, well, we were told they'll call for Utralade." Okay, where are you going to get Utralade from? Bedford Heights? They have four firemen on duty, two to run their pumper, two to run their rescue squad. They're not going to get two more people to run the hook and ladder truck and bring it here. How would anybody like to live in this apartment where you can't be rescued from the back? You have to be rescued from the front, and you're a senior, and you can't get down the stairs, or you're slightly impaired, and you don't have a way. The only way is through the front of the building where the ladder truck bucket would go up and rescue out.
Why don't we put more hydrants than instead of buying a million dollars?
Let me tell you about the million-dollar truck. So a million-dollar truck has a longevity of 20 years. If we can't afford a thousand dollars a week to have a hook and ladder truck to save our citizens, then we have to go and cry and beg for the money, because that's what it costs.
All right, we can do this discussion. We'll hear it. All right, Mark Cattur, is also a candidate.
My name is Mark Cattur, and I am a candidate for Ward Four of City Council in Solon, Ohio. And as a candidate, you're supposed to go out and brag about yourself and some of your accomplishments, but I was raised in a family where self-praise was not considered an attribute that one should have. In fact, it was ingrained in us by my father always saying, "Son, nobody likes a bragger." So that is something that is born to me. President Reagan used to always say, "There is no telling what can get accomplished as long as nobody's worried about or concerned about who's going to get the credit." With the Cattur family, we lived that philosophy. There is one thing, however, I have no problem talking fondly about and bragging about, and that is my beloved Solon. I was born at Carmel Hospital, but when I came home, my parents brought me to 5650 Janet Boulevard in Solon, Ohio, and I am a proud Solon Comet. That pride probably started way back when Mayor Sursino awarded me my diploma from Safety And I claim often that the greatest gift my parents gave me is that I am a Solon Comet. And like our school song says, "I am proud to tell too often, far and dear to Solon I belong." The true value of being a Solon Comet was something I probably didn't really completely grasp until I moved on to college at John Carroll University. I went to John Carroll University after graduating from Solon High School, and I attended with kids from all over the country who went to fancy and very expensive private schools. And at the end of the day, I was just as prepared, and oftentimes even more so, than these students that went to these prep schools. After graduating from John Carroll in 1996 at the request of my grandfather, I joined our family business, Calucci's Italian Foods. This is a business that I had been working at since I was 12 years old. Every school break, it was just sort of expected, and every summer, and if we got off for like Columbus Day or any OTA day, I was at the store. And I've been working there since the age of 12. So you may ask yourself, "Why does this guy want to be a politician?" And the answer is, well, I don't. I have no interest in being a politician. I am interested in being a public servant to the city that I absolutely love. When Mr. Mooney announced that he wasn't going to be seeking reelection, I will admit that the famous inaugural speech where President Kennedy kind of was ringing in the back of my head, you know, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." Well, that applies on all levels of government. And so I thought that, you know, it is time for my generation to sort of step up and take on these leadership roles. So I went and I, I talked with my wife, I talked with current and former leaders in the City of Solon, as well as residents who had watched me grow up. Some of you are in this room today, this evening, and everybody encouraged me to run. I think that I had the skill set that's necessary to be a good and effective public servant. I run a business, I know what it takes to run a business and manage people. I believe I have effective communication skills. One of the things that I think our elective officials oftentimes don't understand about communication is that a big part of it is listening. And one thing that I will promise to be to the residents of this, of this city is that I will be a good listener, and my heart will always be in the right place. I believe that having been born and raised and lived here my whole life, that I do offer the council a historical perspective, and I'm ready to start giving back to Solon. And I respectfully ask for your support in this election so that together we can keep Solon the wonderful place that it is to live and raise our families. And I am ready at this point to answer any questions. Mr. Kennedy, if you want me to answer the questions with respect to the Burton Insurance property, it was the old airstri, when I was a kid, it was the Wimberg airstrip behind Lewis Elementary School. I think you had a question about that. It is a good question because it is definitely involves Ward Four, but it also involves Ward Five. Last night, at last night's council meeting, it was a little heated at times, it was kind of exciting, there was some action going on. There are, basically, they want to split, I believe it's about 47 acres in total, and 30 acres of it, which the part that used to be the old airstrip, is going to be purchased, at least from what we believe. There is a contract that is, has not been made publicly available to the city, but supposedly there is a purchase contract to the Western Reserve, a store, Western Reserve Land Conservancy that is going to buy a 30-acre parcel. Now, the city has gone along and said, "As long as that transaction takes place to, of those 30 acres, to the land conservancy, then they will allow this lot split." Now, most of that lot split's going to be in Ward Five, but it's going to be two eight-acre lots essentially. And you would ask about how many homes could go back there. The way it's set up and the way it is clearly written, and our law director, and I think the administration's been very, very good in writing this, and it's basically, there can be no more than eight homes. Now, this is, would be a private development, so the city would not be responsible for maintaining any of the sewers and other city services, trash collection, and that's a maximum of eight homes on a total of 16 acres. If that, I think that answers your question.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other?
Thanks. All right, Ward Six.
My name tech keeps falling off, but that's not the sound. My hands should have to go. My name is Adam. Soon as the stable's name matters. I want to thank Marilyn for inviting me to be here tonight. Thank all of you for coming here tonight. Tell you a little bit about myself. I've been a Solon resident for nearly 20 years. I've been living in Briar Hill for 12 of the last 20 years. Some of you may be familiar with my workings with City Hall on Briar Hill Project. And quite frankly, during my campaigning and doing my petition signs, people have asked me, "Why are you doing this? Is this because you thought things were broken in Solon, or things are broken in politics?" The answer to that is absolutely not. It's not broke, but the system actually is, was incredible to watch it work during those, the last 11 years. It's not over, project. People have said to me, "Well, are you a one-issue guy?" Well, right now, I'm constantly on, but we're still finishing up that project. But what I, what I'm not is, well, I guess you'd say I am a one-issue guy, because my issue is, if a resident has an issue, they need to deal with the city. That's what I'm there for, to bring the commitment and drive and the passion that I brought for the people of Briar Hill for the last 11 years looking through this issue. Frankly, never thought in a million years I'd be standing in front of people asking me to vote for me. Never thought it would happen. It just kind of did. So the reason I started this, the reason I got involved with this, like I said, after moving into Briar Hill, I was asked to be on the homeowners association as the recreation chair, playing a clambake or two. The next thing you know, I'm driving to Chicago and driving to Pennsylvania looking at dams, becoming a damn, damn expert. And that's where I ended up. So watching and being involved in this process and talking to the people in Briar Hill for the last 11 years and seeing this thing to the almost completion point we're at now and being involved in the process that sometimes appeared to be broke, but not broke, just took a little bit longer. There's an old joke that says, "An escalator never really breaks, it turns into a set of stairs." Take your time, keep moving forward, you'll get there, which is where we've been at. So I asked for your vote for Council Ward Six. I see some people that I, that I recognize that live in Ward Six. And again, commitment is, I don't have any visual aids, I didn't prepare a speech, but the commitment is, I'll be committed to you. If you have a need, I'll be there to represent you. Any questions?
Business, business background?
I was a sales rep with AT&amp;T Elevates for 18 years. Last five years I ran my own media company. We run internet marketing as our specialty. So I understand what it's like to have, work a lot of hours. My father used to always say, "When you own your own business, you get to work all the overtime you want and not get paid for it." How much it's, I've learned in the last 10 years, it's what's the same.
All right, John?
I'd like to ask both you and Eddie. Eddie, you know, I don't follow as, as much, and I understand there may be a lawsuit involved with Briar Hill, with the, with the Briar Hill dam. I had two councils in June on my ear to get our participation. Finally, we were able to do a study up in Letch Hill and do a whole drainage calculation, and yes, the Briar Hill Lake is part of our drainage system. Now, when I was on Public Works, we went ahead with URS, who was the association's engineer, and when I left council, they were in the middle of the project, and now I hear that the city's being sued by the residents. And I'd like both of you to just kind of comment on that and what, what happened.
Sure. There is a lawsuit. There's no question, that's been public. And I'll clarify, you're not correct, URS was never the city, the homeowners engineer. They started out and always were the city's engineer. After their initial studies that, prior to Bill Mooney, Mr. Klensinger, I believe, was the first Public Works Director that hired URS to do a study on Briar Hill Project. When I got involved, we then asked, at the point when the city was telling us, "No, we're not going to do this, it's too expensive," because initial reports or initial studies came back, but I think by Mr. Mooney, when he was Public Works Director, the project was going to be three, four, and five million dollars before eminent domain action, which was when the city said, "Well, we're just going to take your property if you don't let us do it." So we then hired URS to do a study for us, asking the city council, which I believe you sat on at the time...
Oh, yeah.
...to use information that was garnered in their study that you hired them to do to move forward with our, with our study, to see if there was a more cost-effective way to do it. And at the end of the day, there was a cost-effective way to do it, which was two, three, and four times less than the projects brought forth by the city public works director.
Don't say Obermeyer. Don't say Obermeyer, I just thought of what the dam was.
That's the gate system, the Obermeyer gate system. Well, I'll be happy to talk in great detail, if anybody wants to hear the boring details on that, but I'll be happy. Johnny, you're familiar with them. But yes, there is a lawsuit. The project is almost complete. There's a list of things that haven't been done, that haven't been finished. And the biggest issue, quite frankly, with the lawsuit is the lake level. There was an agreement that the lake would be lowered one foot, and now that the project is almost over, it's been lowered two feet. And there's some other issues too, but yes, that, that's the crux of the lawsuit, because the lake is two feet lower than it was supposed to be. It may not sound like a big deal, you know, one foot, two feet, it's a big deal. The recreation aspect of the lake, which we fought for 11 years for, we haven't been able to use that portion of the lake where the diving swim dock is because it's too dangerous now. It's only six feet deep there. So because of the actual lowering, that's not usable. And there's health issues. We had a huge algae bloom this year, which it's, I mean, I live right across the street from the lake, and the windows are open, you have a big algae problem, it's not pleasant. So yes, there's a lawsuit. We want what was agreed upon, and again, URS was always the city's engineer, we just had to do their study afterwards.
Do you treat that lake?
We do treat the lake. We do treat the lake. When it gets really shallow, it gets very difficult to treat and maintain. Yes, we do treat irregularly.
Eddie, I think every councilant should be aware of those on other wards, and I've heard from a couple of people that there's a huge propane tank that people are upset with, and they're concerned with the danger of that propane tank, and they're concerned with kids coming around that propane tank with cigarettes and Idris and anything like that. I don't know if councilman or councilor's you're prepared to comment on that?
I'll, I'll be happy to comment. As part of the lawsuit, as part of the project, not in extensive detail, but as part of the project, there's a backup generator. This backup generator was built, was required to be put in as part of the project by the city engineer at the time. It wasn't required by URS, it wasn't required by OTNR, who's overseeing the project. It was required, recommended by John Bush, who's the city engineer. So they put in a backup generator, which is the fourth line of redundancy in this project, which we believed, we believed then, we believe now, was not necessary. But we said, "If you need it, you want it, fine, put it in." At the point of when the lake project was almost over, I, in a walkthrough with URS and Dan Driscoll and Bill Snyder, some of the city officials, I looked at the, looked, excuse me, the generator, I said, "What's going to power it?" Everybody kind of looked at each other and scratched their head, and somebody said, "Well, how about propane?" I said, "Well, are you asking me or telling me?" So yes, the decision was to use propane, and we said, "Fine, if you're going to put propane there, please just make sure it's safe." Well, look, propane was put there, it's not fenced in, it's not locked, so it's sitting there still today on slab of concrete next to the generator, unprotected. And that also is part of the lawsuit, you want that closed in, locked, so people can't tamper with it. Because there's not a councilman here who's not familiar with that.
Where are you going to be on this lawsuit, and you can get both sides of the pressure?
That's a great question, and that's been asked several times. We first decided...
We'll get back to that. All right. David Spiner.
Thank you for having me.
Good evening, thank you for having me. By introduction, my name's Ed Kraus. I've been on council now, this is my twelfth year. I'm going for my fourth term. We've lived in Solon for twenty years. Born and raised, I went to Cleveland Heights High School, graduated from Ohio State University with a degree of business and from Cleveland Marshall College of Law. I've been practicing for twenty-seven years, been a prosecutor for a good part of that time. I just moved this summer to stay on council with the law firm McDonald Hopkins. Mark mentioned something that really caught me. What we do in Solon is very different than what other communities do. There, I always say, there's no I in team. We, we are, I call us Team Solon. And we do everything as a team. And I'm gonna point to really three specific issues that we've worked our tails off for twelve years to make sure that we are the number one community in Northeast Ohio. And that's been borne out by pretty much, whether you talk about the Cleveland Magazine, we've won national awards for various issues. And I think John and a few other people can, can understand some of the issues. One is where we stand today and look at this rec center and I think about where we've been in terms of like health, wellness, and recreation. We have come so far to make sure that our community is healthy. We have a new recreation center. We have, when we build new roads now, we make sure that there are sidewalks, that are bike paths, because more and more people now demand, and we're gonna have cross access from all of our roads that we build now to make sure that people can access our roads, that they can have sidewalks so we can bike, have our kids bike and our adults bike. And I think about the Bainbridge Road that we've worked so hard to retrofit to make sure now everyone is able to walk the community. And we're gonna continue to do that to make sure that we stay a healthy and viable community. Number two, the infrastructure. We have spent over twenty-two million dollars to make sure that our infrastructure is intact. And John will remember that night in June of two thousand and six when we realized that the system was broke. And so all throughout Ward Six, whether it's Briar Hill, whether it's North Huntington Detention Basin, whether it's the Woodbury Detention Basin, whether it's Linden and Baldwin televising the inflow and the infiltration and make sure that our houses are safe there, whether it's the Preserve project that we're redoing the sewer system in the Preserve. The entire ward and the entire city had a makeover. We, we realized we had a flood plane going all the way from the north end of town through Bainbridge, through the Preserve, through Liberty Hill. And now we have a new infrastructure so that our homes are safe, our businesses are safe. When we redid Bainbridge Road, we put in new sewers to make sure that everything to the east of Bainbridge Road doesn't get flooded. We did the same thing to Pettibone Road, to make sure that we had sidewalks and new sewers so that our infrastructure is intact. That doesn't just save the twenty-four thousand people who live in this community, but it's the twenty-four thousand business patrons that patronize our community every day. Lastly, number three, and I think this is where we get most of the acclaim for. And I really call it, it's our sweet spot. It's our business community. We have eight hundred businesses in Solon. We have twenty-four thousand people that commit to Solon every day. It is the top premier business community in Northeast Ohio. Our MVP, Peggy Wildorfman, receives calls and contacts daily as to how we can move into our community. So what do we do? We make sure that we can help these businesses. We have the GRIP program. And we just had a GRIP application last night, Shankman and Associates. And we provided a new structure, so she's gonna move in with her company to the new, to the Vanderweiss Building on Aurora Row. We granted GRIP applications, which revitalizes old buildings in town so that people can move in them, retrofit them, and grow their businesses in these new communities. We have job creation grants. We've issued probably a half dozen job creation grants just in this twenty thirteen alone to make sure that if you want to come into Solon or if you're in Solon and you want to move in Solon, that we're gonna give you a job creation grant to make sure that not only you can stay in Solon, but grow your business in Solon. That is probably the most important thing that we do. So much of the work, whether it's council, Mayor Drucker, Mayor Drucker's administration, is in constant touch with businesses every day to make sure that we keep our eight hundred businesses, that we keep them strong, that we make sure that they can grow and they can hire people, and to make sure that we stay the number one community in Northeast Ohio. And I come back to that team approach. It's all because we have a team. We have seven members of council. We're all different, we all have different styles and personalities, but we work as a team. We have a great mayor and her administration, and we work as a team together. We have school board members. Everything that we do in Solon, a job creation grant through the enterprise realm, we work as a team with our schools so that our city and our schools remain the preeminent community in Northeast Ohio. And lastly, we work daily with our businesses so that we're in constant communication so that our businesses know that we have their back. When they need something from us, we provide it for them because we're not gonna be like other communities where businesses come, stay a year or two, and leave. In Solon, they come and they stay for life. And that's the difference.
Ed, I have a question. You say there's twenty-four thousand people that work in Solon. And I'm gonna say all twenty-four thousand people drive down Solon Road and try to make a right turn and wait in traffic. But I, I would think that if, what your opinion would be, if we had a right turn lane on Solon.
Yes.
It's into Aurora Row. I know I brought it up several times. The other thing you look to the schools and everything. I often felt deeply that we ought to have a group of companies, schools, and local people that participate in the fund to fund our children in Solon who want summer jobs. And we ought to raise that and make that go forward where every one of our kids who can get a work permit has an opportunity to work and find employment in Solon or learn in occupation. And I think we could do that.
I got a few at home that would like to purchase a bike. But the answer to your question is yes.
And I'll have that right turn.
I said yes. And, and just for, just so you know, I, traffic sometimes is a dirty issue and, and we don't like it. But sometimes I like traffic because you know what, what, what traffic does? It helps our eight hundred businesses in our community. And we have the new, the new Giant Eagle project, and hopefully you all have shopped at Giant Eagle. It, it doesn't just, it doesn't just enhance, enhance the redevelopment of the plaza, but it brings people to Solon. I've had so many people who've said they've never been to Solon. Not only did they come to Solon to shop, well, you know what they do? They stop at the stores, they buy gas, they patronize all of our businesses in town. And we like when people come to Solon. Do we have to fix our traffic? Absolutely. I mean, that signalization study will be implemented. And we have to fix particularly the four-twenty, when you get off on four-twenty-two to Aurora Row. It's a mess. It's, it's an absolute mess at Rush Hour. We all live it. And Solon was built for a small little community, for a few thousand people and not many businesses. Well, we have twenty-four thousand residents and twenty-four thousand people who work in our community every day. So it's grown quite a bit. So we do have to fix the traffic. Yeah, Rick?
I know you have. You, you talked about twenty-two or twenty-four million dollars towards the renovation of infrastructure. At a recent council meeting, I asked if there are any rubrics for how you assure when you go on private property that people are treated similarly. In Ward Six, there's the Briar Hill. In either Ward Four or Five, there's the project that was necessitated for North Hill, new sewers. How do you rectify the difference in the treatment that residents in one ward got versus the other and the amount of money that each had to contribute to getting the project done?
Well, in Briar Hill, we had a great partnership, myself and Adam and all the folks there. We worked on Taylor for eleven, ten, eleven years. And it wasn't easy, and John can tell you, I bid his, I bid his zero off. And Ed Soot.
Why did they?
And everyone else. Thanks to a lot of the work that Adam and all the people in Briar Hill did, we made that, we made that happen. And it was, it was a great public-private partnership. And we didn't do it just because of Briar Hill. It's because three hundred homes, including our homes, Rick, drain into that lake.
That's correct.
And the protection of Carriage Park to the south, so.
And maybe our development should have been participating too.
Adam was part of the Stormwater Mass.
But why did they pay in Ward Six when the North people living across North Hill, effectively in Briar Hill's situation, didn't pay a penny? And had five, fifty thousand dollars worth of work done per household.
It was a pretty good, it was a pretty good agreement.
All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you. One, one last question.
Yeah. I was wondering if the city was gonna be trying to revitalize the brick business in the old Centennial Station and the ice door.
There, the, the property owner who worked in on a deal, that's all I can say. And the other thing, you know, obviously with, just, just with the Giant Eagle redevelopment, we're also looking at the redevelopment of the other aging shopping centers. I mean, that's a huge priority for us. The number one site, Marx, and obviously the, the Earth Care coming in. But that's, that whole area is gonna be a target for future redevelopment.
If we have a few more minutes at the end.